...in year five. It also includes an additional $200,000 for affordable housing projects, which will be one, year one of a five-year plan to get that to $1 million in annual transfers as So that, in summary, the proposed budget maintains the current tax rate at 39.54 cents, allocates $3.1 million for the payment management street resourcing program, $1.2 million in funding for infrastructure improvements, an additional $200,000 for sidewalk and ADA improvements, an additional $200,000 for affordable housing process, projects, provides an average 4.0 merit market increase for employees, adds a 2% incentive to eligible public safety officers with 15 years of service, provides for additional eight police positions and six fire rescue positions, increases investment in operational department funding, and increased funding for support departments. Next steps with the city budget, at May 5th, council meeting, the city will present an in-depth look at the general fund budget along with other operating funds budgets. On Thursday, May 8th, the GUC Convention Visitor Authority and Shepherd Memorial Library will have their budget presentations. June 9th, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed budget with budget adoption June 12th. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Right. Mayor Parkson, panelists?
I have a couple of questions. One is the sidewalks, how much sidewalk does that amount of money cover?
I know that their, the engineering department has- That's a ratio for how much funding goes to each linear, I think, mile of sidewalk.
I think it's $50 a linear foot, I'm not trying to step on your toes, but I think that's the cost.
That sounds about right. They have a number, how much that goes to, I just don't know.
Where's the engineering?
I wanna, I wanna believe that by the time this is all built out, that we will have enough funding for about four miles worth of sidewalk on an annual basis. By the time we'd be able to reach the year five mark, which will, is tremendous compared to basically having nothing right now.
I know you and I spoke, the engineering, all that stuff's into it, but I think the actual physical build outs, I mean, around the money, $50 a square foot, we just talked about this last week, remember? That gives you an idea, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, I didn't want to interrupt you. The raises, you said it's merit market, what's the cost of living, or is that included in that?
That's part of the 4%.
3% market and a 1% merit.
Okay. And PCC, Pitt Community College, I didn't see that, is that?
That's, that's a recurring fund that's already built into the budget. So that, and we'll go into more detail about that in the budget presentation, this is just the increases, but yes, we already have, I think, $25,000 for creative job skills training, or recurring.
And my last question is, with, I guess, just in our society right now, with so many grants being cut and terminated, do we have, do we have concerns that if our police officers are being hired on a grant, that that would be a problem in the foreseeable future? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Councilor Blackburn.
I think Les had his hand up before me.
No, you go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
She loves to share.
Go ahead, I'm calling you.
Okay, alright. Quick question, fire or utilities higher, $400,000 higher?
That is something that has, it's not just a one-year increase we're seeing there. Some of this is driven by additional tools that we've developed in the finance office to track expenditures on an annual basis and kind of projecting a little better about where we're spending the money. And what we've seen over the past four to five years is the cost of utilities has increased about that $400,000, it's not a one-year increase. Some of it's driven by stormwater fees that our parks department has to pay to our engineering department, I think is who it ends up with. Other things, we're seeing increased costs of street lighting with the more, with the brighter bulbs that they're using, seeing a higher cost there. And then there's just other-
Nothing, not in here, but those LED bulbs, aren't they supposed to be cheaper?
No, but we're expanding, we're expanding.
And more, okay.
We're expanding.
And then just general increases as we have more buildings, or also just, you know, costs are going up in general.
Because we're growing cities, it sounds like.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Councilor.
Can you tell us roughly, not exactly, but percentages where our budget money comes from, the primary sources?
For the revenues?
Yes, sir.
Let me go back.
I may have been sleeping on that one.
Oh, here we go.
That, that's, that's-
39% property taxes, additional 26% sales tax, and the rest kind of fills in. Major sources beyond that would be the utilities franchise tax and transfers from GUC.
So, so yeah, the property tax revenue line is by far the greatest line, and I can say that the growth that we've seen there has been from an expansion of the tax base, not necessarily an increase in the tax rate, because just since I've been here, it's gone from 54 cents down to 30, what, 39 cents. Sales tax, we've also been able to derive significant amount of growth during that same timeframe, but I think what we've seen is a slowing of the economy, so those have kind of true themselves back in up. The GUC is based off of the, the formula that's in the charter, it's based off of capital minus the debt that GUC issues, and then utilities is franchise taxes, the tax on natural gas and electricity, but really, I mean, so basically, eight out of $10, eight out of every $10 the city brings in comes from just those four line items.
Is the property include sales, excuse me, real estate and personal property?
It does.
Okay. And is the chart built in for, I know it's a small amount considering the budget, but the occupancy tax that we get?
It does not. That is, portion of that goes directly to the convention visitor authority, which is not technically part of the city.
Is it a 3:3 split?
It's a 50:50 split. They get 3 cents, we get 3 cents. That is kept in a separate operating fund, which will be part, we'll present in May.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, thank you.
Alright, anybody else have any questions, comments?
So mayor, very strong budget moving forward. I think we're very proud of some of the things that we've got built into here that will pay benefit back to the community. And again, next month, we'll take a look at the stormwater and the sidewalk storms in preparation of the May presentation.
So basically, our standard budget, these percentages increases, what is it? If you added them all that you want to change or add to the budget we already have in place, what is it? About 3%?
Probably about 3 to 4%.
Alright, that's all we have. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council.
Let everybody know it's time.
I recommend the music, no. I recommend the council adopt the following motion, holding it closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11, to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, including but not limited to the public body considering and giving instructions to an attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim or judicial action or administrative procedure.
Second.
Alright, motion is made by Councilor Blackburn, second by Councilor Willis, all of those who favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Close session.
...conducting an annual inspection of natural gas pipelines to maintain overall safety. GUC inspects all portions of the gas system in accordance with federal, state, and local guidelines to ensure compliance, system operation, and public safety. GUC maintains more than 1,100 miles of gas pipeline in Pitt County, safely transporting natural gas. This requires the inspection to be conducted in sections over a period of three years. This year, workers will inspect the following section of our pipeline area. You may notice a contractor inspecting underground gas lines for possible leaks and inspecting above-ground gas meters for maintenance. Contractors will have identification and will not need access to any homes, businesses, or offices, nor will they need any personal information or ask for money. If you have any questions about this program, please call the GUC Gas Department at 252-551-1587. And if you think you suspect a natural gas leak, call GUC's toll-free 24-hour emergency
So this is a partnership between the city of Greenville, as well as East Carolina University, the Student Government Association, as well as the Truna neighborhood to come together and basically welcome back our students here for the fall semester, as well as the spring semester, starting in the new calendar year. We want to talk to them just about how they can be a good neighbor, everyone in this neighborhood, whether you're here just for a short time, or you're here permanently and as a single-family residence, that they're all here to work together to make your experience as a student one that's very successful. We hope to continue with the momentum that we gained last year, we actually have about 30 more participants this year as volunteers, we started out about 70 last year, we'll have over 100 this year. So this continues to grow, and we just want to continue to try to do as much as we can to outreach to the community.
...conducting an annual inspection of natural gas pipelines to maintain overall safety. GUC inspects all portions of the gas system in accordance with federal, state, and local guidelines to ensure compliance, system operation, and public safety. GUC maintains more than 1,100 miles of gas pipeline in Pitt County, safely transporting natural gas. This requires the inspection to be conducted in sections over a period of three years. This year, workers will inspect the following section of our pipeline area. You may notice a contractor inspecting underground gas lines for possible leaks and inspecting above-ground gas meters for maintenance. Contractors will have identification and will not need access to any homes, businesses, or offices, nor will they need any personal information or ask for money. If you have any questions about this program, please call the GUC Gas Department at 252-551-1587. And if you think you suspect a natural gas leak, call GUC's toll-free 24-hour emergency
So this is a partnership between the city of Greenville, as well as East Carolina University, the Student Government Association, as well as the Truna neighborhood to come together and basically welcome back our-
basically welcome back our students here for the fall semester, as well as the spring semester starting in the new calendar year. We want to talk to them just about how they can be a good neighbor. Everyone in this neighborhood, whether you're here just for a short time, or you're here permanently as a single-family residence, that they're all here to work together to make your experience as a student one that's very successful. We hope to continue with the momentum that we gained last year. We actually have about 30 more participants this year as volunteers. We started out about 70 last year. We'll have over 100 this year. So this continues to grow, and we just want to continue to try to do as much as we can to outreach to the community.
GUC is conducting an annual inspection of natural gas pipelines to maintain overall safety. GUC inspects all portions of the gas system in accordance with federal, state, and local guidelines to ensure compliance, system operation, and public safety. GUC maintains more than 1,100 miles of gas pipeline in Pitt County, safely transporting natural gas. This requires the inspection to be conducted in sections over a period of three years. This year, workers will inspect the following section of our pipeline area. You may notice a contractor inspecting underground gas lines for possible leaks and inspecting above-ground gas meters for maintenance. Contractors will have identification and will not need access to any homes, businesses, or offices, nor will they need any personal information or ask for money. If you have any questions about this program, please call the GUC gas department at 252-551-1587. And if you think you suspect a natural gas leak, call GUC's toll-free 24-hour emergency hotline
Leo Jenkins was a fighter, and his tenacity awoke a giant in the east. More than any other individual, Jenkins was responsible for East Carolina University's rise from its days as a small teachers' training school to one of the largest universities in the state. ECU, as it stands today, is far from what it was when Jenkins arrived in 1947, and the same can be said for Greenville and eastern North Carolina.
Leo Jenkins was a great leader for ECU, for Pitt County, for eastern North Carolina, and for North Carolina.
Jenkins spent 31 years at East Carolina, 18 as president and chancellor, leading the school to university status, establishing 150 new academic programs, guiding the initiative to establish a medical school, and elevating the Pirates athletic programs to new heights.
My father pushed for growth in Greenville and growth at East Carolina. He knew that through size, they could help more people in the region get an education, and also help Greenville and Pitt County and surrounding areas. So he pushed for growth at East Carolina, and he also pushed for big-time athletics.
After beginning his educational career as a New Jersey high school teacher, Jenkins earned a doctorate in education from New York University. His teaching days did not last for long, however, as he served briefly in World War II after registering for service in 1942. Following his service, Jenkins returned to work for the New Jersey Education Department before accepting a position as dean of East Carolina Teachers College in Greenville. Upon his arrival, Jenkins began the push for the 1951 name change to East Carolina College, noting that the school had diversified its educational opportunities. In 1960, Jenkins became president of the college, and he started the charge toward university designation. In 1967, the years of work paid off when East Carolina College became East Carolina University.
East Carolina was not what East Carolina is today, and the only thing I can say about that is that it is what it is today because of Leo Jenkins.
Jenkins set the stage for university designation throughout the 1960s by leading the university through a series of transformational changes and events. In 1960, he raised awareness of the university by arranging the visit of presidential candidate John F. Kennedy. Two years later, on his own accord, Jenkins successfully led the desegregation of campus without some of the conflict experienced by others.
When he first took over, it was a totally segregated school, and when other colleges and universities throughout the country were having riots and all kinds of problems in integrating the school, he very quietly did it because it was the right thing to do.
The start of a school of business, a graduate school, an expansion of arts on campus, including the start of ECU's summer theater, also helped establish ECU as a vital asset in eastern North Carolina. While helping the university earn the respect of others statewide, Jenkins kept his finger on the pulse of the ECU campus he represented by keeping the line of communication open with students and staff. During his time as chancellor, it was common to see Jenkins walking around the campus, interacting with others, and learning more about campus needs.
You know, you didn't know Leo, but you knew him because he was everywhere on campus.
When he wasn't lobbying for the university or interacting on campus, Jenkins could be found at his children's events or pursuing one of his passions: painting. Jenkins was also passionate about athletics and recognized the important role that sports play as the front porch for higher education recruitment. During his tenure, he propelled ECU athletics into a more competitive place through the construction of Viclin Stadium and Minji's Coliseum, and the acquisition of...